Called the meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone to the March 14, 2023 regular scheduled public council meeting. And Linda Hartlau, Council Chair, please stand. Pledge of allegiance, Lord's Prayer, all in silence for those serving and protesting.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done, as it is in the citizen's hand. Give us this day our daily bread. As we see in the text, it is with us to trespass against him. Man, he is not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thy love is with us, and Thy glory forever will be.
Thank you, and may be seated.
How do you skits go?
Please call. Beth Gilman, here. Margaret Phillips, here. Richard Morgan, here. Kelly Gangel, here. Pat Hobus, here. Jerry Trolley, here. Kathy King, here. Thank you. Counsel, you previously received the February 28, 2023 regular meeting minutes. So a motion to approve the minutes.
Madam President, I move to approve the February 28.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? I have a motion by Ms. Phillips, seconded by Mrs. King, to approve the February 28, 2023 regular meeting minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carries. The February 28, 2023 meeting minutes are hereby approved. The chair notes certification has been made regarding compliance with the rules and notifications of this meeting. We have no guest presentation.
No comment.
Okay. The ones to executive officers' reports. Counsel, this evening there are two new resolutions. Resolution 23-4 and Resolution 23-3. They are not going to be assigned to any committee. And administration has asked that if counsel so chooses, they be passed on the first reading. And I believe Mrs. Shanker can talk about 23-3. Mr. Belew talked about 23-4 during their time. They've also, administration has also asked that ordinance 9-23 be approved tonight on its second reading also, if counsel so chooses. Since, I'll announce this, since the mayor's not here. The Easter egg hunt is, will be Saturday, April 1st, at Lakeview Park at 10:00 AM. I'd like to wish everyone Happy St. Patrick's Day this weekend, be safe out there, and happy birthday, Mrs. King. And that's all I have this evening. The mayor is on vacation. Mr. Belew.
Thank you, Madam President. Counsel, as Mrs. already noted, received yesterday Resolution 23-4, which talks about an equipment project of the police department. You will recall, last year, the city was successful in securing the earmark through Congress for water and sewer infrastructure improvements. That opportunity has returned this year. And the city administration with the police chief is looking for funds for equipment that would otherwise become, that would otherwise be unavailable in the near term without such external funding support. So if you could approve this, we face a deadline to submit this meeting. Thank you very much. And that is all, Madam President.
Does Counsel have any questions for Mr. Belew? Okay, move on to the supervisors' report.
As of March 14, 2023, bed tax is at $8,650.71 and watercraft tax is at $5,476 even.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to touch you. I did know you were here. I apologize.
That's all right. Snuck in on you.
Does he concur?
Law Director.
I never miss a meeting.
Nothing tonight, Madam President, other than the resolution for the train safety. It's pretty self-explanatory due to all the issues we've had derailment. We have, train comes right through the city, and we just like to put a resolution out there to make sure that rail companies can, can protect us from this happening again.
Ask a question. The train that derailed, did that come through here?
Yes, it did.
Come on, say. So what happens after this passes? Does it get sent somewhere, or what is the action?
Basically, it, it's going to go to Ohio Municipal League, and then they will send all of them to the appropriate place.
I'm sure the Senate's going to get it.
I don't think we're the only ones doing this. It is a joint effort by municipalities. No, it's a great idea, yeah. Any other questions? The Law Director. And I'll move on to supervisors' report. Mr. Colston.
Yeah, just a couple of things. Obviously, the guys were out solving this morning. It's been very sporadic, obviously, this whole winter. We haven't had too much overtime, which is a good thing. They are still, we still need to clean up at the beach with the debris that came in with all the winds we had and the trees. Want to commend the service department for getting out and getting the trees out of the streets and stuff. It wasn't too many at all, but there was enough that we had to move some stuff, so other than that, I'll take any questions if anybody has any. Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to committee reports. Mrs. Hobus, finance? Nothing tonight. I have a question. Thank you. Mr. Trolley, environment and public works?
We'll be holding our committee meeting after tonight, so you?
Thank you. Safety services, Ms. Phillips?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Economic and community development, Mrs. Gilman?
Nothing tonight, Madam President.
Thank you. Move on to correspondence. Under correspondence, we have the OSS Solid Waste District, Ottawa-Sudusky-Cynica Joint Solid Waste Management District Solid Waste Management Plan Update Ratification. And we also have the Architectural Review Board Meeting Minute from February 9, 2023. I have a motion to approve the correspondence as stated.
Madam President, I move to accept the correspondence as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Motion by Ms. Phillips, seconded by Mrs. Gilman, to approve the correspondence as stated. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carries. The correspondence are hereby approved. Now we'll now move on to readings of ordinances and resolutions. We'll start with the three readings. Would the clerk please read by title and summary only ordinance 5-23?
Ordinance number 5-23, an ordinance authorizing the city of Portland to participate in the ODOC cooperative purchasing program, including the winner of road salt contract and authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to execute all necessary and required documents and agreements for participation in purchasing program and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Does Counsel wish to take any action as to ordinance 5-23 this evening?
Madam President.
Mr. Trolley.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 5-23.
Is this only my second term? Oh, good lord. I apologize, fellow councilman in the city.
Make a motion to retain the emergency clause in ordinance 5-23.
Do I have a second? I'll second. Thank you. Any discussion?
No, I have a question. This is to purchase salt. What sort of thing is it? It's March. We must have salt left over because there's a snowbust. I'm confused by what this is and the timing of it.
It's done every single year at this time to purchase for next year's salt.
To lock in on prices.
To lock in on the prices. We cannot guarantee what's going to happen next year, and whatever we have left over, we cannot guarantee it's going to last the entire season. So it's just for salt, and it's a standard ordinance. We do yearly to lock in whatever prices are there now, because this is when everybody purchases salt for next year.
And that's why we need the emergency clause, so we can act on it sooner?
Yes.
Okay.
Because if we do not act on it, we will get locked out, not only on prices, but maybe on quantity.
Okay. And maybe this is a stupid question, but we obviously have salt left over. Does that, does that keep?
For the most part, it's inside in our building.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Obviously, we'd love to have a salt barn someday, and I put it in that, but it is inside.
But it keeps good, it'll be good next year.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any further questions, Mrs. King? I have a motion by Mr. Trolley, seconded by Mrs. Hobus, to retain, or to, yeah, retain the emergency clause. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Kathy King?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of seven zero. The emergency clause is hereby retained as to ordinance 5-23. Does Counsel wish to take any further action as to ordinance 5-23?
Madam President.
Mr. Trolley.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 5-23.
Do I have a second? A second. Thank you, Mrs. Hobus. Any discussion? I have a motion by Mr. Trolley, seconded by Mrs. Hobus, to adopt ordinance 5-23. Excuse me. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Kathy King?
Yes.
Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of seven zero. Ordinance 5-23 is hereby adopted. Would the clerk please read by title and summary only ordinance 6-23?
Ordinance number 6-23, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to enter, excuse me, to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the City of Port Clinton and the Isle Navy Militia, a military unit of the State of Ohio, to grant ONM the right to dock and secure their patrol boat at the city's docks on the Porridge River, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Does Counsel wish to take any actions as to ordinance 6-23?
Madam President.
Mr. Trolley.
Make a motion to retain the emergency clause.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hobus. Any discussion? I have a motion by Mr. Trolley, seconded by Mrs. Hobus, to retain the emergency clause as to ordinance 6-23. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Kathy King?
Yes.
Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of seven zero. The emergency clause is hereby retained as to ordinance 6-23. Does Counsel wish to take any further action as to ordinance 6-23?
Madam President.
Mr. Trolley.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 6-23.
Do I have a second? Second. Thank you, Mrs. Hobus. Any discussion?
I have a question. I am not familiar with the Ohio Navy Militia. What is that? That's not Coast Guard, is it?
It is through the Red Horse. Mrs. Shanker, do you want to explain?
Right, it's through. Through the Coast Guard?
No, it's more, it is more like, as I already said, through the, out there. They patrol out in there. They were up in Toledo. They wanted to get closer to this area to be able to patrol. And our policeman said it was fine to use the other side of our dock for them to put their boat on. So there'll be a bigger presence in our river and lake, basically, is the best thing to do.
Do their boats say Ohio Navy Militia, or they don't say Coast Guard?
They say Ohio Navy Militia, from my understanding. It is not a Coast Guard situation.
And they're like, law enforcement?
Yeah.
Seafaring law enforcement.
Yeah.
And so the police dock that we have has two spots, and they only use one, so they reached out to Police Department, Ohio Navy Militia, and requested they could use one of our docks. Basically, we're doing a good public service by allowing them to use our dock, and they in return will be adding more patrol in the area.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions? I have a motion by Mr. Trolley, seconded by Mrs. Hobus, to adopt ordinance 6-23. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Kathy King?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of seven zero. Ordinance 6-23 is hereby adopted. And we'll move on to second reads. Would the clerk please read by title and summary only ordinance 7-23?
Ordinance number 7-23, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to enter to a concession, excuse me, concessions license at Lakeview Park and the City of Beach with Port Clinton Candy Company, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Does Counsel wish to take any action as to ordinance 7-23 this evening? Seeing that, ordinance 7-23, we'll move to a third reading at the next regular scheduled council meeting on March 28, 2023. Would the clerk please read by title and summary only ordinance 8-23?
Ordinance number 8-23, an ordinance authorizing the Director of Safety and Service to accept the material terms of the One Ohio Subdivision Settlement pursuant to the One Ohio Men and Random of Understanding and consistent with the terms of the July 21, 2021 National Opioid Settlement Agreement, and execute the participation agreements for the One Ohio Subdivision Settlement with Teva, Allergan, CBS, Walgreens, and Walmart, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Does Counsel wish to take any action as to ordinance 8-23 this evening?
Madam President, I'd like to interject. Looking at that we are on a second reading of this, and there is a time deadline. Initially, we thought we'd have three readings, but I believe we spoke in pre-council, and Mr. Morgan will not be here for the next two meetings. And if we are missing another council portion, we will not be able to pass it, and we will miss the deadline. So I urge as counsel to consider passing it on the second reading tonight. This is basically another settlement, and the city will be receiving money from Teva, Allergan, CBS, Walgreens, and Walmart settlement, just as the same as it was last year, when we got the initial opioid settlement money. And now what they're doing is if you do not opt in, you will not receive any money. So this is important that it gets passed.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Trolley.
I'd like to make a motion that we waive the three required readings on ordinance 8-23.
Do I have a second? Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? I have a motion by Mr. Trolley, seconded by Mrs. Gilman, to waive the three required readings as to ordinance 8-23. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Kathy King?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of seven zero. The three required readings are hereby waived. Does Counsel wish to take any further action as to ordinance 8-23?
Madam President, would you like a motion to retain the emergency clause in ordinance 8-23?
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? I have a motion by Mr. Trolley, seconded by Mrs. Gilman, to retain the emergency clause as to ordinance 8-23. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Kathy King?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of seven zero. The emergency clause is hereby retained as to ordinance 8-23. Does Counsel wish to take any further action as to ordinance 8-23?
Madam President.
Mr. Trolley.
Make a motion that we adopt ordinance 8-23.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? I have a motion by Mr. Trolley, seconded by Mrs. Gilman, to adopt ordinance 8-23. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Kathy King?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of seven zero. Ordinance 8-23 is hereby adopted. Would the clerk please read by title and summary only ordinance 9-23?
Ordinance number 9-23, an ordinance vacating a portion of Jackson Street located within Block 35, original plot of Port Clinton, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Does Counsel wish to take any action as to ordinance 9-23?
Madam President, I move to waive the third reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Trolley. Any discussion? I have a motion by Ms. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Trolley, to waive the three required readings as to ordinance 9-23. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Sorry?
Yes.
Kathy King?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of seven zero. The three required readings as to ordinance 9-23 are hereby waived. Does Counsel wish to take any further action as to ordinance 9-23?
Madam President, I move to retain the emergency clause.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Trolley. Any discussion? I have a motion by Ms. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Trolley, to retain the emergency clause as to ordinance 9-23. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Kathy King?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of seven zero. The emergency clause hereby retained as to ordinance 9-23.
Does Counsel? Madam President, can we interject here? Can I, is it just that little portion that's over by the water treatment plant?
Yes, ma'am. It's right there where the Jet Express fence goes into.
Thank you. I move to adopt ordinance 9-23.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Trolley. Any discussion? I have a motion by Ms. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Trolley, to adopt ordinance 9-23. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Kathy King?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of seven zero. Ordinance 9-23 is hereby adopted. We'll move on to first readings. Would the clerk please read by title and summary only Resolution 23-3?
Resolution 23-3, a resolution urging the legislative branches of the federal government, as well as the state of Ohio, to enact legislation to further protect the citizens of the City of Port Clinton, Ohio, from the inherent dangers of a train derailment on the tracks located in or near our city, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Does Counsel wish to take any action as to Resolution 23-3?
Madam President.
Mr. Trolley.
Make a motion to waive the three required readings of Resolution 23-3.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. King. Any discussion? I have a motion by Mr. Trolley, seconded by Mrs. King, to waive the three required readings as to Resolution 23-3. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Kathy King?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of seven zero. The three required readings are hereby waived as to Resolution 23-3. Does Counsel wish to take any further action as to Resolution 23-3?
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Trolley.
I'd like to make a motion to retain the emergency clause in Resolution 23-3.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. King. Any discussion? I have a motion by Mr. Trolley, seconded by Mrs. King, to waive, to retain the emergency clause as to Resolution 23-3. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Kathy King?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Motion carries by a vote of seven zero. The emergency clause is hereby retained as to Resolution 23-3. Does Counsel wish to take any further action as to Resolution 23-3?
Madam President.
Mr. Trolley.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 23-3.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. King. Any discussion?
Yes.
Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Kathy King?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Kathy King?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries by a vote of seven zero, resolution twenty-three dash three is hereby adopted. Would the clerk please read by title and summary only, resolution twenty-three dash four?
Resolution twenty-three dash four, a resolution approving the Port Clinton Police Department Equipment Modernization Project and authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to submit application for congressionally-directed spending to the Honorable Marcy Cafter and the Honorable Sheridan Brann.
Thank you, does Counsel wish to take any action as to resolution twenty-three dash four? Madam President, I move to waive the three required readings. Thank you, do I have a second?
Sir.
Any discussion?
Mr. Gilman, do you know what kind of equipment he's going to have off the top of your head or just to give us an idea?
Should be approximately five hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment, including